People could slow it down on the replay, right?
I'm gonna call a meeting order, which will lead it.
To the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, for more than any executive session, so we haven't held public comment.
George Stankovich, Palayato, once again, uh, speaking for the senior citizens and veterans of the United States of America. Uh, I think it's a crime what's going on. I hope these politicians are watching the news lately. That, uh, people are losing their homes right and left without an increase in taxes. This is ridiculous. It's a time of trouble. I think it's time we get to these school boards and everything. And tell them to ease up. Use your mon- money properly and make sure it goes every penny to where it's supposed to go, not into somebody's pocket. We find out that people are supposed to honor the, the people taxpayers are putting the money in their pockets. And then they get caught, they get a sentence, and it's not much. And a slap on the hand, and don't do that again, and never pay back the taxes that they, they stole. This is ridiculous. How would you like to go, just go to the bank and steal a hundred thousand dollars and then never have to pay it back? Uh, that's a great way to live. That's what these politicians are telling us to do, to make ends meet. This is ridiculous. I'm tired of this. It's just not fair. Now, I can't think of her name right now, but the lady up in veterans, I have sent up, and I hope they all go up there. Five people, veterans, that can't get benefits. This is ridiculous, ridiculous. And I'm gonna see, I hope they come in today and tell me they were up and they couldn't get nothing. I'll be up at that, at that door, and she better be with a lot of good answers. That they can't give benefits to people that serve this country overseas. This is ridiculous. I hear it all the time. She says, that's not so, that's not so. Don't tell me it's not so. I'm finding it out, and I will be at that door, I guarantee you, with that person or without that person. And I'm telling you, it's time to react. We see what's going on. It's more crime. People are doing crimes or getting away with murder. And people like, uh, dogs or something like that, they wanna throw in jail for six months. I love animals, but I, I think we should all love people first. Animals are second. I don't wanna hurt any animal, but the same punishment can, gotta meet what's being dealt out there. Not to walk around the street and you see all these people now just living in cubby holes in Potsville. On Center Street, on Center Street. This is ridiculous. It's time to help these people. I realize they all don't want help. Okay, thank you, but it's time to react and start caring about people. Thank you.
Good morning. Laura Krisonowski, resident of the People's Democratic Party in Potsville. Yeah, People's Democratic Party, they run things. Um, on one day, I was outside in my yard, and all of a sudden I hear a thunderous crack. And a tree limb approximately maybe thirty feet comes crashing down. I had to get out of my yard. It went into three other yards, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is it's from a property owned by a gentleman named Dennis Lehman. Who has not paid any city taxes, any county taxes, any school taxes for nine years. And yet, Tim Pelish, the city solicitor, will go into court and defend him. Meanwhile, poison ivy about ten foot high is growing up the front of the building. Weeds have fallen into the sidewalk, which I absolutely refuse to clean up, and this hurts everybody. Because the county didn't get its revenue, the city didn't get its revenue, and the city refuses to do anything about it. In fifteen years, I have filed numerous complaints against the property. In fifteen years, there was only one citation, which was not enforced. The citation said, "Clean up the front porch." The front porch now has weeds growing on it because people don't do their job, and it hurts everybody. When you don't get your tax money, when the city doesn't get its tax money, when the school district doesn't get its tax money. But the city solicitor defends the guy in court, there's something really wrong with that, very wrong. And the question becomes, what do you do about it when somebody stands here and tells you that you're not getting all of your tax revenue? Who do you send out to go after the city to find out when you're gonna get your revenue? When are codes gonna be enforced? Because it all is interconnected. But we don't like to hear that because we just wanna live in our little bubble, in our little cocoon. The problem is, if anybody walks down that street, there's slate falling off of the roof. There's poison ivy growing up the building. The weeds are falling off onto the sidewalk, halfway into the middle of the sidewalk. And guess what? It's supposedly a corridor into the county. Laurel Boulevard is supposedly a corridor. I'm absolutely, um... Uh, there aren't even words for what it is, but anyway, the question really is, what do you do about it when you're not getting your tax revenue? What do you do to go to the municipalities or the cities or whatever it is and say, excuse me? We would like you to present us with a list of those properties which are not paying their taxes, and we would like to know what you're doing about it. Why aren't you enforcing your codes? Why are you depriving everybody else of fair, uh, representation under the Fourteenth Amendment? Equal protection under the law. I'm not equally protected, and nobody else in this room is equally protected. Uh, so anyway, apparently my First Amendment has just ended. Because freedom of speech is limited. Uh, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Chef Uncle Palowato. This will start out beating a dead horse again. Ken Hatter's issue. Let the public know where it stands. If my calculations are correct, it's a hundred thirteen days today that he's paid to work from home. With no end in sight. I, I can't imagine an investigation of this magnitude taking over a hundred thirteen days. But apparently, we'll hire an out-of-county consultant, some lawyers, they'll milk it. It's probably costing six figures. So let's just go with that and see how long it'll take until the public forgets, and then we'll push them into an office somewhere else like we did with Rukowski. Or we'll just put them back in that office. It, it's a shame. Hundred thirteen days, paid to work from home. Probably what, fifteen, twenty thousand bucks he's getting to work from home? That state of affairs here. Lisa Stevens, that investigation blatantly stole from the county. Again, no update on that either. Uh, where do we go from there? Let's see. Conflict of interest. Boots, uh, again, I, I don't know. We have some good solicitors in now. I'm not sure how you were instructed previously, but several of the votes that you did take part in are conflict of interest. Just because there's no money directly done by that, if it results in it, and it's an immediate family member, which you've done multiple times, or yourself, it's a conflict of interest. So there are complaints being filed by numerous people on numerous accounts that you voted on. Which, if you would've abstained, it would've went through anyway, so I'm not sure why you would not abstain, being that it's direct family member and your own farm. You know, that's the reason you pushed for that extra money to go through, so that you could get it in your pocket. Now all of a sudden, your brother's getting it, and you voted on all of it. I don't know. That's just like Ann Dooters voting on her brother to get an increase. The lack of common sense is just mind-boggling. Where's the salary board comment policy at? This is three months going on. Every time I get up during salary board, I make a comment, I get yelled at, sit down. It's not salary board related. You have no policy in place, so you can't enforce something that you don't have in place. Um, Larry, I wanna thank you for reaching out regarding the soup kitchen. Hopefully that comes to a resolution. Uh, Gary, uh, you offered some meals last week, so hopefully we can get that resolved. There's thirty-six days till the closing date, so get that resolved. And did anybody, uh, play Inspector Gadget and find out which office needed the typewriter last week that there's no funding for?
That's what we didn't find out.
Yeah.
Okay. But like I said, that's how far out of touch some of these are with the offices and the employees. It's a beer in it, right? Do I have extra? I don't know if I have any extra time left.
Three minutes right now.
Okay.
I would give everybody a little extra ten seconds, so.
Josh wanted to get out of here, so I'll take an extra ten seconds, just to stare at a smiling face. Just to stare at a smiling face. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Morning.
Morning.
Kevin Swanberg, uh, St. Croix, Pennsylvania. My house was taken illegally at an upset sale. I was here a couple weeks ago discussing it. And, uh, your solicitor responded to, uh, my motion to void the sale because I wasn't personally served. And according to real estate tax sale law, you have to be personally served, or the commissioners can sign off on a waiver, which I was not on. So neither happened. But he signed, uh, he filed, when I filed my motion to void, he responded. And he said that the Tax Claim Bureau did, in fact, comply with the real estate tax sale law. Now, he did this, I think the meeting was the twelfth, he filed it on the fourteenth. So in those two days. Did he do this on his own? Did he say it? Or did he interview the ladies that I spoke to down there, the director and assistant director of the Tax Claim Bureau? That stated that, in fact, my property was sold illegally at the upset sale. Now, I ask for your time after this meeting, the three of you, to walk down to the Tax Claim Bureau with me, pull my file. And we will ask the representative there, was this property sold in accordance with the real estate tax sale law? I invite all the members of the press to come down with me as well, if these gentlemen will join me. I'm asking for five minutes. Five minutes of your time for a very good house that was mine, worth about a hundred forty thousand dollars. Because of an error in the Tax Claim Bureau, and the gentleman that made the error and lied under oath is not there anymore. Was transferred the day I, I sent in a notice of perjury. So I invite you, three gentlemen, to give me five minutes of your time to go down to the Tax Claim Bureau with me, or have the representative come up here. And open my record and see if I was personally served, and if I was, and they could prove it, I wipe my hands claritous. If not, I leave it on your laps. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate if you would join me after this meeting for five minutes of your time.
I went down after the last meeting, looked at your.
You did, and?
And, and we're not giving legal advice.
Yeah, I can. We don't give legal advice.
Okay.
You are representing yourself as your own.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So, would you come down?
We already, I already looked into it. We're not giving legal advice on that.
You're not giving me legal advice. I, I'm, I'll bring her here, one of them here to, to.
And, and that office can't give legal advice.
It's not legal advice. I just wanna know, was it sold properly? It's a yes or no question. It's not legal advice.
That's a legal conclusion, so, so.
It, it. No, uh, uh, no.
Legal conclusion, was it personally served? No. There's no legal conclusion there.
Any other public comment?
Uh, good morning, uh, Melinda Dybert in North Man.
Sorry, sorry, I was, wasn't ready, sorry.
Okay, uh, Melinda Dybert in North Mannheim Township. Wow, hard for me to follow up on the heels of that, so, you know, generally where there's smoke, there's probably some fire somewhere, so. Yep, y'all might wanna pay attention to that. Uh, I did follow up on some things from last week about the paid versus unpaid interns. Uh, it seems that there was a program that, when Deb Twig was the HR director, several years ago. There was a program through Career Link, um, that the county availed itself of that program. And it actually paid for several offices in the county to have paid interns. So I'm not sure if that funding dried up, if that program's not available anymore or what. But, uh, maybe if Mr. Kern or someone in the Human Resources Office, uh, might kinda look into that and just see, is that funding still available? It's still my opinion, take that for what it's worth, that both paid and unpaid intern positions should be posted or advertised on the county website. I mean, where you're already doing job postings, why not post those to the public? Because I think by and large, kids do not know what's available in the county. Some, some kids are willing to do unpaid internships. Other kids cannot afford to do that. They need something paid to tide them over during the summer. Uh, some of the wording that's used by some offices that have had paid interns. But they were not calling those positions internships. They referred to them as either a temporary clerk with no benefits. But if you look at the dates, that those temporary clerk positions, uh, would typically begin some, beginning of June and end sometime, maybe the second week in August. So, hmm, okay. Um, anyway, I did, I did wanna touch on that. Those positions should be posted. It's like insider truck trading. If you're not a member on the inside, you do not know that those positions are available. So, another thing I do wanna get back on, uh, the Clean Air Council in Pennsylvania, uh, does offer particulate and different types of air monitoring. Did we ever get any sort of answer from DEP regarding the West End homeowners? Whether we can get air, water, or soil testing done for them? Whether we could, uh, cause NSP was fined, you know, a fair amount of money. And I had asked State, uh, Senator Dave Argle, can we have some of that fine money that was paid to DEP? Can we have that carved out for the homeowners to put towards testing? So that they're not having to pull that out of their own individual pockets for a problem that they have not created. So, okay, so I don't know, Larry, when you had your meeting with DEP, did you get an answer to that, or did you ask the question?
Yeah, I asked about air sampling because there's, there's now kind of a Philadelphia group.
Clean, yep, that's the one I mentioned.
Supposed to, they were put in contact with some people from West End, as far as I know. You know, they made, as far as I know, they were put in contact, but not DEP, that, that thing out of Philadelphia, group out of Philadelphia.
Okay, I had just asked the question, like, when you had your meeting with DEP.
It was in Pittsburgh, it was in Pittsburgh.
Okay, maybe that's a different group then.
Yeah, there's a group that's doing something with air monitoring thing, and I know they were given, somebody's contact information out of West End. I can't remember which person. And I did look into, uh, I asked every member to contact DEP about setting that meeting up like the West End Academy. That they said they would do. I said, well, let's get them going on it, so after last week's meeting.
Okay.
I went in and asked about it.
Okay, yeah, keep us posted on that because that does need to be advertised to the public.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Okay. Any other public comment? Can I move on with the meeting? Can I motion to approve the minutes from our June twelve meeting?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve our minutes from our work session meeting of June nineteenth?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, can I motion to approve what was presented in our workshop by Drummel Provation?
Uh huh, second.
Question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve, uh, new in service, what was presented in our work session?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by our grant writers in our work session?
Motion to approve all four, uh, requests by grant writers.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve all four public works, uh, that was presented in our work session?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve all five things that were presented in our work session by the Office of Senior Services?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve all three items that were presented in our work session for nine one communications?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve, uh, what was presented in our work session for mental health and developmental services driven alcohol?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Well, can I motion to approve all twelve things that were presented by children and youth that are, uh, for exception?
So who, I'm holding over to the, uh, the end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, spread out from you.
Yep.
So.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the three items that were presented in the work session for solid waste and recycling?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the trainers lots in our work session?
Motion to approve the report given last week.
Second.
Any question?
Mr. Pudora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
County administration.
No.
Okay, uh, doing the resources.
Hi, Commissioners, we have a few actions today. In the Children and Youth Office, there's an appointment at Belinda Yority. Uh, the court type is two at a rate of sixteen point one eight two five, effective seven fifteen twenty four, uh, per the evening contract. In the Parks and Recreation Office, we're transferring the following employees, um, from soil conservation to Parks and Recreation. Drew Klein as a supervisor of Parks and Recreation at a rate of twenty six point six three one five. Robert Evanschop as Assistant Parks and Recreation Supervisor per dam at a rate of fifteen forty five. And Dana Gluns as a per dam boat rental clerk at a rate of ten dollars and thirty cents, effective seven one. And also Nicholas Rowe as a boat rental clerk per dam at a rate of ten thirty. These are all effective seven one.
Can I motion for the transfers?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess?
Yes. Uh, finance call.
Uh, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, this morning, upon the Board of Commissioners' agenda, there are four budget adjustments that are listed. Uh, these budget adjustments were posted outside the boardroom. I'd just like to note the last two budget adjustments are in connection with item seven on your agenda. That you just recently approved today for public works related projects.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any new business? Can I motion to adjourn? Uh, uh, hold on, I'm gonna talk.
Commissioners, I just wanna make you aware, this morning there was a bid opening, uh, in connection with a street project in Tamahla. Uh, they will be funded with CBVG funding. Uh, there were seven bids that were received. They will be reviewed and awarded at future.
And then, uh, we met last night, the EMS services, uh, of schools, of, of, a lot, a large group of the student county. They are having issues with basically membership and people helping and everything, so. We met with them, we're trying to come up with some solutions with them, talk with legislators and everything, but it's, you know, sometimes emergency service, ambulance services overlooked a little bit. You know, till you need them, you know, and we're getting to a point across our county, but maybe one day you'll call nine one, there'll be no ambulance that shows up. So we met with them last night, listened to all their concerns, and we're gonna try to work with them, to try to find a solution, to try to help the situation. And it's, it's across the board with firefighters and with everything. It just seems, there's not the participation. We're trying to figure out ways to get the public involved again, and so I just wanted to note that we met with them last night, and it was a good meeting. Uh, any questions?
Well, we're a bit further into it, uh, like Channell right now, covering Union Tasha, Beach, Union Tasha, North Tasha, Rink Town, Rink Town, Lost River Service, so. They're covering twelve municipalities. While we sat here last night, Richie Akamai got a, a call out for Mount Carmel. Uh, actually got a call out from Mount Carmel, so they're traveling into North Harblin County, that, that, I can't, I can't, whatever you said, not just Hoover County, it's North Harblin. We're traveling into Berks, we're traveling into the Dawton, and, uh, the, you know, with, with Channell, the ALS system, they, they, they're covering twelve municipalities right now. They're, they're very difficult to recover. The other part to talk about too was the funding. And there's a little bit of fork in the system, and we did discuss this about six months ago, that on the Chamber of Commerce meeting, meeting, what the, uh, ambulances. If I put on ambulances, my insurance company gets billed for it, the check comes to me. And a lot of times, the people don't bother in taking that check and giving it to the, reimbursing the ambulance association. And that, I mean, I, I understand times are tough, but either people are operating as volunteers, they're operating on very short, uh, cash flows. And for God's sakes, if you get a payment from your insurance company, please give it to the ambulance association. I guess by staying with some, some hoop it on to try and change that, the insurance companies don't wanna have to be involved with a third party, they wanna help their clients only. That's one of the biggest problems they have right now is that there are, is money available to do that, but it comes to the client, it comes to the person. And if you aren't good enough to take that money and give it to the ambulance association, they, they don't wanna, they, they could go to a collection agency, but that would, that creates more. Yeah, they will, and, and, and. they, they don't want to, they, they couldn't go to a collection agency, that would, that creates more, yeah, ill will and, and, and legal fees and lawyers and so so, but, and once, you know, we, we always go to the block party for the fire company. We need to spend some time supporting some of the events for the, the ambulance association.
Again, you've pretty well covered the, the whole meeting, and one thing that we're gonna try to, uh, pull together, again, this is an all, altogether opportunity of not just the county, but also each municipality in this county, all sixty-seven. According to Township and Borough Code, naturally they gotta pick a provider and hopefully, uh, help that provider along the way. And again, we need to have this total buy-in, because just what my colleagues have said, this is at, at a crisis. There's only certain amount of people that can, you know, operate now because of different changes, uh, of the way it is. They have to have the education, the time, they can't even drive a vehicle just to be the driver. I believe it's sixty, sixty hours, I think they gotta put in of training just to drive the ambulance, so. Oh, excuse me, a lot has changed over the years, so. Again, we gotta look at that, if there's support, and also to get into hopefully the schools, which they have tried to, uh, to get there, to hopefully get some younger people involved in that arena, uh, to do some things. And it, it has helped, uh, from what we understand, Potsville, and now next year, I think Blue Mountain will be having a course to do that, but a lot of times they'll do that as, uh, I guess getting their feet wet, because then they're looking to go on whether into the nursing field or, or whatever, so hopefully just to keep them all in there. So we, we got an array of different issues, it's not just one issue. It's right from reimbursement to staffing, uh, to help from, you know, keeping the, the ambulance going and, again, going. And I've read a, a white paper, uh, again, uh, from one of the companies that assist and, uh, consult on these things. And this is statewide, this is not just here in the county, it, it's, it's all over, and the same thing. So I think collectively, that's what we need to look at and to do, so.
Carrie, you were so sure in comments about the youth summit about kids not knowing.
Yeah, and that was some things that even with the youth, that, I guess they had a thing on, uh, one of the programs that we had at the youth summit. And a lot of times they're unaware of what's out there and, and doing. And that's why we had the, uh, nonprofit fair, uh, we, we have that usually in October after the senior citizen, uh, uh, thing that, that Diakon has up at the mall. We had like twenty-two different, uh, groups of nonprofits come in, and the students went around to see what was available there so they can, you know, hopefully give the, of their time. And, uh, but again, there, a lot of times they're not aware of what's out there, giving back to the community, so. That's what we're hopefully trying to make sure that, that in the awareness arena, to try to do that.
Can I motion with your, your salary board? Report of the meeting ended the session.
There were none coming.
All the comments.
Didn't see that one coming, did you?
But do I do your thing, I'm waiting for it, I usually use those words, throwing salary boards.
Uh, Melinda Dybert, North Mannheim Township. Okay, um, I really would just like request that you guys be a little bit more open and transparent on everything. Uh, you see, we got the fourteen positions in, for the Conservation District to be eliminated. And there was a memorandum of understanding that was approved in April of this year, uh, regarding that memorandum of understanding. But if you go back and check the wording that was on the agenda, very difficult to tell from the cryptic language that's on the agenda, what's actually being approved. So, I think the fact that the Conservation District is, seems to be doing well enough with their funding streams that they can separate or peel off from the county and have more flexibility in how they administer their state and federal funding, et cetera. And hopefully, that will translate to less of a contribution of county taxpayer funds going towards the Conservation District. So, uh, maybe if this had just been discussed a little bit more at a meeting, and maybe you intend to get into that before you actually just like put these positions up, because it makes it look like, well, we're just getting rid of all these people in the Conservation District. Um, so, but I did speak with someone down there, and they said, don't worry, we're not losing our jobs. And I asked, are you gonna be considered state employees now? Nope, they're gonna be their own ship and in charge of, you know, directing themselves through the Board of Directors, uh, for the Conservation District. So, um, yeah, I, I just, maybe y'all were gonna discuss that a little bit more today, I, I don't know, but I just wanted to bring that out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
I'll let you go for that.
I see your smiley face in that Christmas in July.
Chris, I'm a whole notch, it's not July yet. Oh, you're getting it early.
Um, can I motion approve the minutes from the salary board meeting on June 12?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And Controller Kenchik?
Yes.
Uh, can I motion approve the salary board work session, the minutes of June 19?
Uh huh, second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington? Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yackencheck?
Yes.
So, uh, human, human resources.
Okay.
Here, so let's.
All right, all right. All right, so we do have fifteen, um, positions to be eliminated with soil conservation, eleven of which will be eliminated the date of six twenty-eight twenty-four. And they are as follows, the district manager, the national, the nature resource conservationalist, the insect management technician, conservation program coordinator, environmental education coordinator, agricultural program coordinator, agricultural program specialist, conservation program assistant part-time, conservation program technician, conservation fiscal technician, Chesapeake Bay coordinator per diem. The remaining four, um, positions will be eliminated as of seven one twenty-four, and they are as follows, supervisor of Parks and Recreation, assistant Parks and Recreation Supervisor per diem, and two boat rental clerks per diem. So in the Parks and Recreation Department, we have four positions being created as of seven one twenty-four. And they are supervisor of Parks and Recreation, the assistant park, Parks and Recreation Supervisor per diem, and two boat rental clerks per diem. In Parks and Recreation, we are setting the salaries, effective seven one, for the following people. Drew Klein, supervisor of Parks and Recreation at a salary of twenty-six point six three one five. Robert Evancheck, assistant Parks and Recreation Supervisor per diem at a salary of fifteen point four five. Dana Glens, boat rental clerk per diem at ten point three oh. And Nicholas Rowe, boat rental clerk per diem at ten point three oh.
So, first, listen. This was started like before I was elected, but they had numerous meetings about this. The condemnation is I, I'd asked them point blank, do they, do they think this is the best thing for them? Do they realize going out on their own and everything? And one of them, they said, yes, they're, they're good with it. I asked, they said, are you sure this is what you want to do? They said, yeah, they think it'll be more effective and, and more control, and hopefully cuts through some of the time delays and everything.
Majority of the counties have them on privatized, I think Berks, Berks did, often, and we did bring in people from the, uh, State Conservation Commission to, to advise and to, it wasn't a, a rack decision wasn't done, a hurt anybody wasn't done, because the performance was done, because this makes like, was said, it makes it more, quite more flexible. I went on the board for many years, chairman of the board. We got into situations like, we had a person who was hired by the county, but the Chesapeake Bay technician, which was funded by UPA, would provide a raise, but we couldn't, because the union contract couldn't, so we had to write, write two paychecks, so it made things much more complicated. Like I said, I believe forty or more districts have gone privatized already, and, and move by little. And the state is advising that, if, if possible, now, there are some employees that are in a state-owned, it's county employee, they're close to retirement. So the bottom line, not the hurt anybody, not the, and lose their job at that hurt anybody retirement, so it's, this has been a whole regal process, a lot of, a lot of effort was put in, right, Carrie, it was pretty.
Yes, that, uh, again, this has been almost a two-year process, I would say, roughly when talks, uh, started on, on doing this. Uh, again, I sit on that board, I go to many, I, I don't miss many meetings at all, and that's one thing I, I got to say, is to make sure, is this good for the Conservation District? Because over the years in my time that I've been spending here, uh, that district and, and board has done so much stuff for, uh, Skupu County, it's unbelievable. And you can see the staff that they have there. The staff is small, but they're mighty, uh, they go after grants aggressively to get different things. I've always said that my business is right along the Skupu River. When I first moved down there in eighty, the water was many different colors on days. And now they're actually putting fish in it and so forth, and that's through them and also, uh, other people along, like Trout Unlimited, uh, the Headwaters Associations, everybody else that works together, uh, up to doing those things. So that's was, uh, again, kind of the thing of other districts have done it, I think almost forty now, if I'm not mistaken, to do that. We did something similar to the Penn State Extension. The Penn State Extension was also a county employee, and Penn State came to us and said, we'd rather to pull that in, and what we do is we give an allocation out at the end. And that's how that'll all be worked out, uh, in the end of get, getting that. A lot of times the county had a, uh, the district had to reimburse the county for certain, uh, uh, people, uh, positions and so forth. So this way it gives them the opportunity to, of what they have is to handle what they can hire. And I've seen it over the years, that they've hired an intern, and the intern would work there, and next thing you know, the intern was gone because they can go to another county or somewhere else where they're getting a lot more money, and you, you don't blame them, uh, to keep there. And I tell you, we've had some really good, bright people and energetic people on that district, and we've lost them because we couldn't keep them because of, of the, the pay that they were getting, was one, one common reason. So, uh, I believe that this is good, uh, that their board voted, voted on it unanimously. There was no one, eh, in, they actually put a handbook together for all the employees, the, uh, healthcare. And actually, employees even sat there during why the healthcare people were there, and a lot of the board members saying, do you feel good about this? So they made sure that they had the buy-in too. And I, believe me, I, I sat there listening to them, because I've said, this gotta be good for the district and also the employees that were there. And I feel that it is, uh, they feel that it is, and we hope that, that this venture will be nothing but good to, uh, continue the good work that they, they have done over the years, so. And that the thing with the parks, the park is naturally the county park. So naturally, rather than putting the overhead on that of the upkeep and everything and the employees, we have a small staff out at the park, that comes under the whim now of actually, and stay under the county whim, that, uh, Drew Klein would report, uh, to us, so, rather than the Conservation District. So that's the difference there, that we wanted to make sure the park stayed within, uh, the county's helm, so.
Thank you. For explaining that, appreciate that.
Can I have a motion, we'll do the, so the two motions for the elimination of the fifteen positions?
Okay, so move the fifteen positions for the Conservation District.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yackencheck?
Yes.
Okay, they can make a motion to create the positions of Park and Recreation at separate sizes.
They make a motion, they create three positions and set four salaries.
Second.
Any question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yackencheck?
Yes.
Any new business?